Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Donellen Borough Council meeting here on December first at seven P M. Our first order of business is a call to order in the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement Roll Call by Mrs. Lauren Stat, our municipal clerk.
This meeting of the Donellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of December first, twenty twenty five, was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier. On January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Donellen website on November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Santo?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Noted absent?
No, here.
She's joining virtually, I believe.
Can she hear us?
Councilwoman Rios?
I can hear you. Can you not hear me?
You're you now. Welcome virtually, so she is present.
Present. Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Here.
Okay, item number three on the agenda says presentation, but if we're good with it, council, I'm gonna move up approval of meeting minutes to number three, and then we'll just take in number four as presentation. So can I have a motion in second on the regular meeting minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Any comments, additions, or redactions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, now moving to item number three, which is now four on the agenda, presentation. Today we have Brandon from our, our financial advisors, N W Financial. He's gonna be speaking to us about our sewer rates and what's going on and a plan that we have in place moving forward if so approved by council. So Brandon, the floor is yours.
So this presentation is gonna be, it's gonna be in two parts, almost gonna be a review of how we got to where we are now and the rate study and what we're gonna do going forward. So. Sorry, might be upside down. Yep, was. Yeah. So it's a relatively small sewer system that we have here in Donellen. As, as we know, Parsa is who is in charge of your sewer. They get their, their, their bill from M C U A. That is the twenty twenty five Donellen ordinance, it was three hundred sixty five dollars for a single family, three sixty five per unit for multifamily residential. And then at the bottom there is the commercial non-residential. That gets billed the three sixty five plus one fifty, which is five fifteen minimum, or if the usage was high enough, it would be four dollars and twenty five cents per thousand gallons. So we looked into selling the sewer system because of aging infrastructure. The sewer lines are starting to get old, so you need to invest into them. Also looking into paying off municipal debt. For the sale, once you do the sale, the proceeds you have go off, you have to first pay the sewer utility debt, that's outstanding, which for us was two million dollars. The rest goes towards paying off general obligation done, which would have been three point five million dollars. We're also trying to keep rates as stable as we can for the users here in Donellen. So we only received one bid. It was from N J American Water, who also does Donellen's water. The three main points you can see at the bottom there, five point five million dollar purchase price. They said they would put in two point five million dollars in capital improvements over the first five years, and they could hold Donellen residents to that structure at the bottom. They did want Donellen to do a ten year increase in rate in year one, and then they would hold out the rest of the years. So summary of the sale, we decided not to go through with the sale because we thought that it didn't have a big enough financial impact for what we were looking for, for the budget. And there's certain things that you could see here that are in the utility budget that have to be put into the general fund budget, and because of that, it wasn't worth us doing the sale.
And the main reason we don't have one bid, we didn't have any.
Correct. So that is the background of the sale, our analysis of that, and then once we did that, we sat down with everyone. We decided to look at a rate study and where rates need to go. So start this section. The goal was to create a financial scenario or have the same financial impact that the sale would have. And because of this, we built in, on the next page, I'll have a budget laid out, but we built in a hundred seventy five thousand dollars a year in annual debt, save a servings. This is what would have been paid with the, paid off with the sale proceeds. And we also kept in a hundred twenty five thousand dollars annually in the sewer utility budget that's pulled over the general budget. Future debt service, wanted to keep this kind of apples to apples as well. The two point five million that N J American Water said they would do in the first five years, we're also doing that, but it doesn't start with debt service until two thousand twenty eight. Then we also added in a thirty thousand dollar flat fee just in twenty twenty six. This is necessary because we're now since we're gonna be using usage, we're gonna need to build a usage model, and because of that, we just wanted to add any fee, so we were in the ballpark. So this page shows the twenty twenty five budget. In twenty twenty six, you can see we used the remaining operating surplus that will be left over this year, and then we increased the rents by our percentage that we're gonna go over on the next page to get to the increased rent amount. The blue highlighted sections are what I talked about on the previous page, that's gonna be thirty thousand dollars that we're adding. And we're also adding in a hundred seventy five thousand, hundred twen- and keeping the one hundred twenty five thousand, so we could have the same financial impact as the sale. There's a small surplus there. This is self liquidating utility, and we're trying to keep it the same, we just wanted to build in a little push in the stock. So up top is the Donellen ordinance right now, which we went over earlier, three sixty five per unit, and then the four dollars twenty five per thousand gallons and for, for the commercial. So in this chart, we kept the flat fee the same, this is the twenty twenty six projected rates, this is what we're going to do. We added in a one dollar and thirty dollar volumetric charge, if there's a usage charge. Yes. Sorry, this, sorry. I already said it, sorry.
Thirty dollar.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
One dollar thirty cents per one thousand gallons of usage. So that will, i- is being added on in addition to the three hundred sixty five dollar flat fee for, we're gonna do it by meter size, as you can see there, most residential units are in the five eighths meter size, two thousand of them out of, I think it was two thousand three hundred. So then we also added in the commercial unit rate, we kept the annual admin fee and the add, the minimum annual charge the same, we just added one dollar on top of the current usage charge to get it to five dollars and twenty five cents per thousand gallons of usage. The next page will show us, like the, this is what you would be billed based on your usage. Twelve thousand on the lower end, maybe a, a single user by themselves. Forty five thousand, fifty five thousand, the average for Donellen was between forty nine thousand and like fifty thousand gallons of usage, this is all annually. Uh, so we just wanted to do a little bit on both sides, so you could see the impact there, and eighty five thousand is maybe for larger family living in a house together, and that will be the average annual dollar increase in those. And then the last page is comps, try to get it as close as possible, it's hard to find this information all the time, but we have Somerville, which they have a flat rate plus a wastewater charge plus a treatment charge, which adds up to, if you use fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand gallons average user, you get eight hundred eighteen dollars is their average annual bill. They do bridge water, which starts at four eighty four flat fee, and then they add in their wastewater charge and treatment charge, and you get nine hundred eighty five dollars annually. And then Piscataway, they're pretty much where we are now, three hundred sixty dollars, but they get most of their income from the commercial, it looked like, but I just wanted to have that in as it's nearby and a good comp. And that is it.
Brandon, thank you. Scott, Alex, any of the council members, anything to ask Brandon regarding what's being proposed?
When's the last time we did an increase in Donellen?
Uh, there was a fifteen dollar increase in twenty twenty four, before that, I believe it was not increased since twenty fourteen.
And each year we're, as, as a town, we're getting charged more by.
Yeah, that's, that's true, M C U A is charging Parsa more, and then Parsa is charging the Borough, or the Borough hasn't provided for that on to the consumers, and so this rate increase that we're proposing.
So basically, we're eating more of the cost than the current budget and doing less improvements because we're referring those costs to keep it as flat as possible, but unfortunately, time has come to keep up with inflation, they increase the cost with the, the op- our operator and service provider that we need to consider doing this. And I think one of the fairest things we did was making sure that we didn't increase the flat fee, and we kept it three sixty five. And then if we do it by usage, then it's at least up to the user on how much they want, if they're gonna wind up using. So they, they have the control of doing that, and I think personally, if you're asking my personal view, we had to do that. I think that's more equitable than if you're paying for your own usage versus doing an almost five hundred dollar increase flat across the board. So, um, yeah, it's an aging infrastructure, we're trying to accomplish what we were trying to do in that bid, which was to improve the infrastructure, we've been doing improvements every year, but at some point, it's just it's, it's eating too much away of the budget that at some point we need to increase the sewer utility thing.
One of the pieces of the, of the sewer budget is the Parsa piece.
Yeah.
It's the largest cost associated with that, and one of the challenges in putting this together was, was we didn't know what that increase was until recently. So I believe that this, these rates take into account what the Parsa's charges are going to be for this coming year.
Yep.
Yep. And as per other municipalities, I know you have a couple listening on there, I, I, you know, and remember from one of the studies that we did do before that we are pretty much the lowest.
The lowest. It's hard to break out, but if you do it by the average usage, it's definitely on the lower, and, and then if you do it by flat fees, three sixty five is significantly lower than most surrounding towns.
And, and, and also in the plan, the plan is also to put back into our infrastructure, and that, that would be repairing lining or sewer mains, which obviously would save the Borough a lot of money because a break is five hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars. And also by, by lining or sewer mains, we would be protecting them not only from breaks, but also from I N I.
You're probably not being picked out, I'm like.
I got one.
Oh, one right there, perfect.
Yeah, so, and so, and so it would obviously would help us out with I N I because we're charged on whatever flow goes to Parsa slash goes to M C U A, so in a heavy rain event, we'll see the flow spike high because, because of the old infrastructure, and it's taking on the, the rainwater, so this obviously would help out that.
And this, this analysis includes what would have been that two point five million dollar over a ten year period that American Water was going to do. This fund, this raises the funds to be able to keep that capital improvement plan for sewer utility.
Correct.
Okay.
And that plan is being identified by a policy, or can you, uh, or is it being implemented through the ordinance?
Be implemented through the ordinance.
Okay.
With a plan, obviously a plan to, to put in place.
Okay. So the goal is to do that work and hold this accountable to make sure that those dollars are spent on infrastructure. So. Council, any question for Brandon?
Okay, well, the presentation is the presentation, the public, this will be available tomorrow, once we get through the introduction for public to review, and then at the next subsequent council meeting, which is December fifteenth, would be available for open discussion on said ordinance, so, okay, Brandon, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number five on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances, can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty five dash twenty one, an ordinance to amend the general legislation of the Borough of Donellen Municipal Code two thirty three, Sewer Use Article One, General Regulation, Section, Section thirty seven, Sewer Rates.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson? Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number six on the agenda is the adoption of ordinances, twenty twenty five dash twenty, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of property in and by the Borough of Donellen in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating one point one million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million forty five thousand bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof. Do we have a motion in second?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
I will now open the floor to the public, specifically and only to twenty twenty five dash twenty, uh, this bond ordinance, which is for the purchase of two oh five North Washington Avenue, which is the old Investor Bank property for municipal parking lot for downtown and future assessment on whether, what building we put there in terms of overall services. Okay, I'll close that portion of the meeting, we'll open the floor to council for discussion on twenty twenty five dash twenty. I will note that with the purchase of the Lutheran Church, and now this, if it goes through, we will be working with financial advisors and our bond counsel on assessment as well as the, our building here on what is best appropriated in terms of municipal services for each property, so that is something that we will be working out through twenty twenty six. Okay, no further discussion, can we take a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay. Item number seven on the agenda is resolutions, we have three eighty eight through three ninety one. If Mrs. Stat, you can read them out, and then give us an opportunity to discuss them.
Resolution number three eighty eight is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution three eighty nine is to approve a service contract between Animal Control Solutions LLC and the Borough of Donellen.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Vandermark.
Anything you'd like to bring up on the animal control, Mr. Miller?
The service that we started to use last year, where they that, a year and a half ago, I started looking at other services for animal patrol service, and it's not an easy task to find a company that was willing to, in the past, we had Edison Animal Patrol, and they recently, a year, a little over a year ago, they said that they no longer wanted, they're cutting out, you doing other municipalities, so they, they're, they're scaling back on outsourcing. I reached out to Middlesex, they use Franklin for animal patrol, reached out to Franklin Animal Patrol, they do not want to expand either. So I contacted Animal Patrol Services, and they, they took on the Borough last year. They came, they, they, the fee last year was twenty seven hundred per month. And he said, well, we'll give you, we'll charge you at this rate, we'll see what the, how, how much, how many calls we have, what your volume is, all that stuff, so after when the year was almost winding up, I said, well, could we work on those numbers a little bit, they did come in at a more reasonable number. They also said, if you do a two year deal, you, you'll be able to save close to ten thousand dollars. So in, in, uh, talk with them and try and again solicit other animal control services, this is who, uh, we ended up coming up with animal patrol services.
Okay.
Would have saved about ten thousand dollars over two years.
Has there been any significant complaints about their services?
I had not gotten any complaints about the services from residents at all.
Uh, there's a discussion on it, Mr. Miller's here.
I'll take a roll, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution number three ninety is a resolution of the Borough awarding the bid for the Second Street Improvements Phase Two to Top Line Construction Corporation.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott. Mr. Miller, anything on this?
Uh, at the top, uh, there were eight, we had eight bids come in for Second Street Phase two. Two.
Right.
Two, three, just gotta prove it, two, uh, Top Line came in with the, the best number. Top Line Construction was a contractor that did Lincoln Avenue a couple of years ago, did very good quality work, so glad to hear that they got the bid.
No questions, I'll take a roll, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution three ninety one is opposing the S forty seven thirty six bill.
Move it, Sigmund.
Okay, let me go over this really quick with everybody. So Senate Bill S four seven thirty, forty seven thirty six was introduced to the New Jersey State Senate on October twenty seventh of this, of this year. And it require, it would require if it moves forward, and I can tell you, the Conference of Mayors and League of Municipalities is, is against this bill. Will require municipal planning board to approve an application to redevelop an eligible property into an inclusionary development regardless of the property's location within the municipality, and it dictates permitted of density of forty units per acre and a height of one story, which in Donellen it's three stories, so there were about four stories. If this bill goes through, above the maximum height otherwise applicable to the zoning district in which the property is located. An eligible property is defined as a property, including non-residential buildings owned by a religious organization or tax exempt nonprofit organization. So basically, for example, church decides to build exclusionary affordable housing. This is not against affordable housing, so I want to make that very clear, it's against this, our opposition, if we approve tonight, and I tell you, I oppose it, especially in my role as President of New Jersey Conference of Mayors. I- i- it's against basically taking away our local zoning rights and allowing the state to basically dictate it, that if they have this, they can automatically go ahead and do it, and basically surpass our planning board and automatically get approvals. The proposed legislation would completely bypass, like I just said, and undermine the careful municipal planning process that involves the establishment of a municipal master plan, which we went through reexamination recently and decided on those amendments, which, and the extensive study of land use circulation, community facilities, economic development, sustainability, and stormwater management within the municipality ensures adequate, and ensures adequate, uh, infrastructure safety and proper long term planning. So instead, the proposed legislation, that's what a master plan does, it basically helps us the ten year scope out what the plan is gonna be, our stormwater regulations and everything else in place, so we're prepared over a ten year period. But instead, this proposed legislation bypasses the local planning process and mandates that regardless of location of property, a planning board must permit conversions or partial conversions of properties owned by religious organizations or tax exempt nonprofit or organizations into inclusionary developments, provided that at least twenty percent of the residential units are very low, low and moderate income units and meet state mandated bedroom distribution requirements. It dictates a mandated density of forty units per acre and a height of one story above the maximum otherwise applicable, as we said earlier. So in short, the proposed legislation denies local autonomy in local land use and planning, completely ignores the careful and well thought out planning of municipal master plan, which we took over a year, two years ago to do. Spent a lot of money on it, took a lot of time, a lot of studies, a lot of worked with other partners throughout the state. And have a master plan that we amended that I think is good for the next ten years, and we've never had any issues with fair share housing, we've had no issues on what we're doing with affordable housing, in fact, I'd quite frankly say we're quite progressive with affordable housing with a lowercase p. And so, and we've met, thanks, Jeff, I appreciate the laugh. So we're, we're, we're in favor of it, this is not a Republican versus Democratic issue, because a lot of Democratic mayors and their councils oppose this legislation as well. So, and again, this is about our home rule, our ability to have autonomy over our local zoning and our planning process, so that's why I would advocate and implore the council to, uh, vote in favor of this resolution to oppose, uh, the Senate Bill forty seven thirty six. It'll be sent to the governor, it'll be sent to the governor-elect, Mikey Sherrill, it'll be sent to our Assembly District, our Legislative District, as well as the two newly elected, uh, Assemblymen. I've met with Assembly-elect Andrew McCurdy, he knows my position on this. So I hope he listens to those of us on the ground at local level on this issue when he gets into the Assembly in January. So I think I've spoken enough, this is about us being able to have a say on our future in the state, not coming in and do a top down approach, one size fits all glove approach that they so famously do, and this isn't the only housing bill that they're coming out of Trenton, so remember, voting has consequences.
All right, I'll take a roll, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is the consent agenda, three ninety two through three ninety four. If council can take a moment to review it, let us know if you have any of the resolutions you want to pull out and discuss separately. No? Okay. Can I have a motion in second for the consent agenda?
Move it, Sigmund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Stentures? Okay. Next on the agenda is council report. Councilwoman Vandermark, anything to report?
Yeah, the Donellen P B A toy drive movie nights are back. December fifth at eight P M is a national lampoon. December sixth at four P M will be Elf. December sixth at seven P M is Polar Express. Admission is one new unwrapped toy per person. And this event supports Umbrella and New Jersey Youth in Foster Care.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes, Buildings and Grounds, the D P W has begun installing holiday decorations throughout the Borough, including in the downtown area, Borough Hall, Land Washington Park, Washington Memorial Park. Minor electrical upgrades are also under. Minor electrical upgrades are also underway at Borough Hall and the O E M office. Harser Report. Harser assisted our D P W with a sewer clog on Prospect Avenue. On the evening of Tuesday, November twenty-fifth. Denellen Public Library, please visit our Facebook page and website to explore our exciting programs. We also, we also offer free museum passes to Denellen Library cardholders. The next Greenbrook Flood Commission meeting will be Wednesday, December third at seven thirty P M. The next Board of Ed meeting will be scheduled for December sixteenth at seven P M. And one last thing, Living Hope Outreach Center on Whittier will hold their annual toy drive on December twentieth. Please note, the children must be present to receive gifts. In addition, their monthly food drive will take place on the second Saturday of each month at eleven P M. Please remember to bring your own bags, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, you said four o'clock on Saturday for elf?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The sixth.
Thank you. Councilwoman Albertson?
Carol Fund would like to thank everybody who donated for our Thanksgiving food drive. We're now gearing up for the Christmas winter holiday food drive and angel trip. All food and gifts go back to our community. Angel feed will be virtual and in person. Donations can be dropped off at all three Denon schools or at four twelve New Market Road. If you need assistance for the holidays, please reach out to us. You can contact us at carolfund@gmail.com or reach out to me at T Albertson at Denellen-nj.gov. American Legion will be collecting items for the veterans at Menlo Park. Watch for their wish list on the following Facebook pages, the Denon American Legion, Neighbors Helping Neighbors and my personal page. The Fire Department responded to thirty-three calls for service in November. Total calls for twenty twenty-five is four fifty-eight. Uh, November ins- incidents, fire four, rescue two, hazardous condition four, service calls two, good intent nine, false alarm twelve. In addition to emergency responses, the Fire Department attended several events and held several drills during November. On eleven-ten, they had their monthly officers' meeting and department work drill. On eleven-eleven, they attended the Christmas Day Ceremony. On eleven-nineteen, they had instruction drill, eleven-twenty-two, they set up for the Fire Company Christmas Tree Fundraising Sale. Eleven-twenty-six was the monthly Fire Company Meeting. And they're happy to see that a number of residents continue to join the department over the past few months. The Fire Department is still looking for a few new members. Um, in order to be a um junior member, you have to be between sixteen and eighteen, and the full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit their website at www.denellenfd.com or email joindfd@denellenfd.com for more information. And don't forget the PBA Toy Drive at the Denellen Theater on Friday and Saturday, that's so much fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lance?
For the Recreation Department, uh Recreation Basketball Program Registration is open for children grades K through six. The program starts on January third and will run for eight weeks, wrapping up on February twenty-first. Basketball will take place on Saturday mornings at the Faber Gym and you can register online at www.denellenparksandrecreation.com. The annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony is set for Sunday, December seventh at six P M at Washington Memorial Park. This is always a fantastic community event with hot chocolate, caroling, a brass band and a visit from Santa. Please join us as we bring in the holiday season together. And Santa's elves have finally delivered his Santa mailbox to Denellen for children to mail their letters to Santa. The mailbox is located on Prospect Street outside of Borough Hall. Letters will be accepted from um November fourteenth to December twelfth. Mail your letter and look out for response from Santa. And calling all Clark Griswold. Enter this year's house decorating contest, register by December twelfth and keep your holiday lights on between six to ten P M from December fifteen to the twenty-first as judging will occur during those times. The registrant is not required to be home for the judging. The winning registrant will be notified by the Recreation Department before the twenty-fourth and you can register online at www.denellenparksandrecreation.com. That's all.
Okay, thank you, I look forward to seeing Santa Claus on Sunday. Council President?
Uh, yes, for the Shade Tree Commission, they've actually done so much, I had to divide this report into four different branches. So uh, for the maintenance and planting, uh, the funds were used to plant and mulch eleven trees throughout the borough. Uh, two memorial trees with plaques were planted. Overgrowth at the railroad embankments on the south side of the underpass was cleaned and trimmed uh both the spring and the fall. And the tree at South Washington and New Market was decorated for Christmas. If you see uh Ken walking around town, make sure you give him a nice high five for that. Uh, the pruning of suckers and whips uh was performed at the base of numerous trees with plans in place for lower branch pruning over the winter. Uh, in the inventory and planning branch, the commission completed an inventory of trees in Washington, Columbia and McCoy Parks. And the plan is to complete the inventory of Moorcraft and Gabornic next year. A catalog of the most common street trees in Denellen was also created. And the inventory of trees along public roadway, roadways throughout town was also updated. Uh, additionally, there was a leaf and bark identification document that was completed. Uh, for education and outreach, uh, the commission gave an Arbor Day presentation to the first graders at Faber School and planted a tree with them. Educational displays on the benefits of trees were placed at the Denellen Public Library and the Denellen Hotel. The Shade Tree Commission's Facebook page was fully revamped with fresh design and streamlined administration to better engage the public. Highly recommend you go online and check it out. And the commission participated in the mayoral town hall event on volunteerism. Uh, the commission provides uh contact information for residents interested in having a tree plant. Uh, the commission provided information on how to join or help the Shade Tree Commission. It is a fun group. Uh, I know the mayor's uh volunteer form uh has gone out. Uh, it's a, it's a fun group to join, so if you have time to volunteer, please consider. Uh, and for administrative and professional development, uh, Denellen was awarded the Tree City USA for the twenty-second year. Uh, the annual report was filed with the New Jersey State Forestry and the commission met with Highland Park Shade Tree Commission to exchange ideas. Uh, the members attended a session on utilities and trees. And members completed several continuing education courses on tree management. And that is my report.
Well, thank you for talking about trees tonight, and they do a great job, as you noted, fantastic. Councilman Scott?
Definitely not going to be as funny as he was. For the D P W, they continue to routinely clean the downtown borough parks and properties. Weekly leaf cleanup in the parks, leaf cleanup downtown. Leaf crew has, I'm sorry, the crew has continued leafbag collection and a reminder. The curbside pickup will continue through the end of the year. They installed playground mulch and extended the border around the playground area in Moorcraft Park. They delivered the Christmas trees to the downtown and have started the holiday decorations throughout the borough. They continue to service the D P W equipment and police vehicles. And they prepare for the winter equipment for the snow season that hopefully doesn't start tomorrow. And a reminder about parking restrictions during snow emergencies to ensure snow plows can operate freely and effectively. Allowing borough streets and roadways to remain accessible for essential and emergency functions. Parking restrictions will be in effect. The restrictions commence one hour after continuous snowfall begins and ends twelve hours after snowfall stops. During this time, no vehicles may be parked, stopped or left abandoned on any streets in the borough. Vehicles on the street during snow events will be ticketed. Also, please don't direct your snow blower onto the plowed streets as that'll create ice. And for alternate off-street parking during snow emergencies. You can use the following locations, the American Legion Post one nineteen, at one thirty-seven New Market Road. McCoy Park on North Washington Avenue and Columbia Park on Orange Street, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh. My report this evening, uh, first up, I will note, as Mr. Miller noted earlier. We applied for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for the municipal aid grants through the state and we were awarded four hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars for roadway work. On Second Street Phase Three, so that's from Washington to the terminus uh by Plainfield. So uh, within three years, all of Second Street will have been paved via a grant, so that's good news. And we are awaiting, I believe, still some of the other grants to be announced if we were recipient of them as as well. And this just keeps pushing us closer to the ten million dollar goal that we, well, beyond, we want more than ten million. I am selfish there, I think I should be greedy when it comes to grants. But um, you know, we're 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 well over eight million now and we're we're keep pushing that down the field, so let's keep doing good work. Um, and it's, a lot of it has to do with the master plan that we had and the studies that we've done around it and what they appreciate we've done as a municipality, so just saying. Um. Redevelopment Town Hall, Denellen's Annual Redevelopment Town Hall is coming up next Wednesday. On December tenth at seven P M, it's at the George W. Hodgillik Firehouse. Attendees will hear about the history of redevelopment in Denellen. Uh, current projects, upcoming plans and how we, how the these developments benefit our community. Don't miss this opportunity to ask questions, share your thoughts and stand formed about uh the redevelopment efforts and what I would say positive changes are happening in our downtown. You can join and attend in ver- in person or you can join virtually, you can RSVP at, well, it's on the website, but tiny, tinyurl.com backslash Denellen Town Hall. Um, just a shout out to Sydney, our hometown Olympian, congratulations to her on uh, on her induction into the New Jersey Hall of Fame. This well-deserved honor is a testament to Sydney's incredible talent and historical achievements. As well as her unwavering dedication, humility and what I would consider the most important, her faith. Uh, Sydney was also named as Female Track Athlete of the Year and Female World Athlete of the Year by um. World Athletics and we're incredibly proud to have Sydney representing our Miracle Mile as well as Union Catholic because we have a great friendly relationship with them as well. On the global stage, as she continues to inspire future generations of athletes right here in our hometown and throughout the entire world. Um, uh, Council President noted it, volunteer applications for terms starting in two thousand twenty-six are open until Friday, December nineteenth. Giving your time is one of the most meaningful ways to support our community. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire council, we are grateful for many of the Denellen residents and businesses who already serve and are such dedicated uh members of our committees. Um, these are opportunities for people of all interests to get involved and we have a plethora of committees and commissions and boards and uh to be part of. Um, the applications are available online. Um, you can go to denellen-nj.gov backslash volunteering or in person in the lobby of, uh, in the lobby of Borough Hall. Um, some roles of uh are appointed annually while others extend beyond two thousand twenty-six, so the descriptions are on the website, they will note how many years those terms are. People who are currently on them, who are up, their terms are expired, they have an opportunity to decide whether they want to continue serving, we take that into consideration. Amongst other factors, and then of course, we always welcome new members to step up and be appointed to voting member roles. And if you're not appointed to a voting member role, we do take who, those who sign up and we hand them over to those said committees or commissions so they can call upon you throughout the year for volunteer opportunities. Now, once it gets in the hand to those committees and commissions, whether the chairperson, person in their, their committees do that, that's one thing, but I can say we do handle that contact information over to them. So um, important to make sure everybody has an opportunity to volunteer in the Miracle Mile. Um, we already noted the holiday events, looking forward to them all coming up, we have a great holiday spirit, Christmas spirit here in Denellen. Uh, we have the Christmas tree lighting, letters to Santa, the house decorating contest, Hanukkah menorah lighting, I think that's the sixteenth, that's six thirty P M? Six P M and Santa around town. Uh, Second Street Phase Two, which is from Madison to Washington Avenue, the bid award has gone to Topland Construction, we heard that tonight, who was the contractor who did the work on Lincoln Avenue in two thousand twenty-three, which is a very well-done road. Already announced the grant, um, Washington Avenue beautification project. The contractor, uh, double A Berms was install, has installed the conduit at uh the three hundred block of North Washington Avenue. Along with sidewalk replacement and concrete footings for the light poles, and you can see that they're going now down towards uh the train bridge. Um. So that's a good improvement. P S C N G and L E D lighting, uh, P S C N G has informed the Borough Administrator Alex Miller that they have just received the new L E D decorative lights for Washington Avenue between North Avenue, North Ave and Denellen Ave. And they expect them to be installed within the next two weeks. They've also informed our B A that their lamp inspector is working on the intersection list of L E D upgrades currently. This is was a list of lights that are intersections that have been requested to have L E D light upgrades and is the first step to the L E D. Streetlight upgrades throughout the borough, again, we're replacing the ones that are currently there or the ones that aren't existing at the intersections. See what that does in a radius of lighting and then we'll do an assessment again of whether there needs to be more additional lighting. Um. Our engineers report for Klein Place corrective work has been completed and C M E is preparing the closeout documents, which is. I know our CFO is here, he loves to hear that because that means our grant money is coming and can offset that debt, so always good news. Uh, Washington Avenue Street Lighting, the work as I just noted is underway, I'm not, should take that out instead of repeating myself. The S S four A project, uh, which is the Safe Streets for All Project, uh, the grant we got from the federal government. Uh, kickoff meeting was held November sixth. Um, they're currently working on data collection and then we're going to be doing some outreach to the public and also to focus groups. Such as Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force, the youth one that is now through the high school, so they can be a part of the process. And then Bound Brook Road, Streetscape, um, we're reviewing utility locations and obstructions to determine where the lights can be installed in areas of P S C N G has currently objected to. So um, project that is underway, but some more work in engineering that needs to be done. Um, so the N J D O T has extent, approved the extension of that uh, that grant on for the timeline, so that's my report for this evening. And so I will get back to the agenda. Okay, council discussion, how about this, can we go to Department Head Reports and then we'll come back to council discussion because I think that will take a little time. Uh, Clerk's Office, Registrar's Office? Registrar's Office, sorry. Uh, Finance? Still financing? Okay, cool. B A, D P W?
Lot, lot of it was saturated tonight, so.
Oh, guys, Recreation? Police?
Nothing.
Rescue?
I'll come up to Nick. Good evening, Janet Best for the Denellen Rescue Squad. Back in summer twenty-four when we vacated our location on North Avenue. The borough committed to providing us uh. Climate-controlled uh temporary facility. For the past year, we've been at, working out of the industrial tent located behind the Fire Department. That location has no heat and it is my understanding that it may be going away soon. No definite, no definitive time when that might be happening. I'm just wondering, is there any um progress on finding us an alternate location?
Well, I will refer to Mr. Miller, I believe you guys have been having meetings and conversations, so.
We go and and kick around some ideas and. And after reviewing a couple of things, it looks like that we're going to be looking at uh a home, a temporary home at the D P W.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, legal? I T? Okay, thank you, now we'll get to council discussion. Um. Volunteer of the Year and Lifetime Achievement Award, uh, a form was sent out by our Public Information Officer. Asking for suggestions for Volunteer of the Year, we do have a listing of council members who. And I also put one forward on lifetime achievement, but we'll start with Volunteer of the Year Award. Um, suggestions and um. We all were provided that information, if there are other names, you know, you're not held just to this list if other names do come up in this conversation. Um, so uh, the floor is open for Volunteer of the Year, there's three individuals that have been listed. I'm going to allow those who recommended those names to speak upon who they're recommending and why. And then we'll discuss and have a consensus because we have to move on it. For Lauren, so she get the plaque. Okay, I'll just, I'll call names.
I would say I can, I can start. Uh. So uh, I am not nominating uh David uh from the Rescue Squad. Uh, so first a little data and then I'll get into my narrative, so uh, he has responded to. Uh, it looks like over two hundred uh calls as part of the Rescue Squad while on call for two thousand hours, uh, that equates to about. Two and a half calls uh per twenty-four hour period, while also on his full-time job. Excuse me, uh, he has also recently joined the Fire Department and gone on uh numerous calls with them as well. Uh, but my nomination for him is more than just, uh, the number of calls, uh, that he has gone on. So when I first met David near the beginning of COVID, uh, he taught us how to properly pronounce his name. Uh, saying that Atchenstein is mean. And Atchenstein is quite fine. And this simple interaction is a perfect example of the inviting, friendly, and positive vibe that David brings to his volunteer work. Uh, his positive influence has a direct and measurable impact on the health of our volunteer services. And for his steady attitude, which makes high-stress environments feel like a welcoming community. And for his measurable contribution, contribution to community spirit and volunteer recruitment. Uh, I am proudly nominating David Atchenstein, uh, for Volunteer of the Year.
Thank you, Council President. Um, other council members who have nominations to put forward?
Uh, Terry Albertson, I put forward, uh, Ken Boden Distel. Ken has been very active here for many, many years, being a council member, being council president. Uh, most importantly, I mean. Cole, you really gave a good talk about the, the commission there, the Shade Tree Commission. And if it wasn't for Ken, we wouldn't have that. I don't think we would have it. Or it wouldn't be around, hasn't been around as long as it has been. It's been around for over twenty years. And Ken has been involved in it forever. And, and he's not just, uh, you know, a guy that says, okay, you need to try and plant a tree. You need to, to get out there and, and pull weeds. He's out there. He's working hard. I see this guy picking up trees that are growing. I once had him come my house and pick up a, a tree that was growing in my yard. It was a little thing, but he took it, put it in a pot, grew it, and planted it someplace here in Dan Ellen. So I really think that he deserves to be recognized for everything that he does here in town.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rios, you have a name?
Yes. Um, I'm proud to nominate Sue Connolly for Volunteer of the Year. Sue has been a dedicated volunteer in Dan Ellen since two thousand and eight. Serving both the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department with unwavering commitment. While her family volunteers in Greenbrook, Sue has consistently chosen to vote, to devote her time and talent to Dan Ellen. Demonstrating a remarkable loyalty to our community. For more than a decade, she has balanced the demanding responsibilities of family life. So seventeen years, she had a newborn at the time, I believe. Uh, so family life and a full-time job, all while showing up day and night to support our residents in their moment of greatness, greatest needs. Her reliability, professionalism, and compassion embodies the highest standards of volunteer service. Sue doesn't just volunteer. She represents the heart of community service. Her longstanding dedication, selflessness, and resilience makes her an outstanding candidate for Volunteer of the Year.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other council members have nominations to bring to the floor? Without, without any other discussion, we'll close in and we'll just focus on the three names. All equally honorable and great public servants and worthy of the award. So, um, great recommendations this year. I know the decision's going to be tough. But a decision needs to be made nonetheless. There's three names. There's Sue Connolly, David Atkenstein, and Ken Boden Distel. I thought you said. Steen is, oh, Steen is mean, Stein is fine. Got it. Okay, that went over my head.
Uh, you're not going to like, you're not.
I thought he was just, I just thought he was rhyming it with it, not to. Yeah, well, heck. If that's what brings me down, then, you know. Okay. Three great names, but we got to pick.
Well, I'm going to second on, um, David only because, um, you know. He's younger and inspiring people of the next generation to continue to serve the community. And I think that's really important and it's important that we encourage, um, the next generation to continue, um. To pour into their community. And that's that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to add that Sue is like one of the only females in the fire department right now, so. Girl, girl power.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
So I'll, uh, I'll throw it all for a loop because both of them are members of mine in the fire department. But, uh, I have to go with Terry with Ken. I think Ken's done a lot for the borough. I think, uh. Ken, uh, you know, the, the report, the glowing four branch report we got earlier.
I think this is turning into twenty-two where I actually have to break a tie. This is again, very. Okay, so we have two for David, two for Ken. One right now for Sue, which leaves you where, where are you leaning towards?
I put to Ken. Hal was very fond of him and liked the way he did things around here, so.
Okay, so I think we have a winner. And everyone was very equally deserving of this award. So if we're good, we have a consensus based upon the third vote on it, that it's going to be Ken Boden Distel for Volunteer of the Year.
Good job.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your nominations and recommendations for Volunteer of the Year. Next up is Lifetime Achievement, uh, Award, and we have a few recommendations. Um, if the council's okay, I will put a name to the floor and then we can discuss other names. Um, so I wanted to, I'm respectfully nominating and sommily nominating the late Councilman Harold Vandermark. Uh, for the Dan Ellen Lifetime Achievement Award. Hal was a dedicated public servant, Navy, Navy veteran, business owner, and proud resident of our community for nearly four decades. His passing left a profound void in Dan Ellen, I personally feel, but his legacy of service, kindness, and commitment continues to inspire all who have known him. Hal moved to Dan Ellen with his wife Liz and their children Joan and Hal Junior in nineteen eighty-seven. And their family quickly became woven into the fabric of the community. Over the years, he gave generously of his time and talents coaching Dan Ellen Recreation Baseball and Softball to help guide the next generation. And volunteering with the Dan Ellen Downtown Management Organization and the Dan Ellen Arts and Culture Commission. His lifelong passion for the arts led him to open the Inspire Art Gallery and Studio in two thousand eighteen. Where he celebrated creativity, showcased local artists, and fostered artistic expression throughout the community. For many, the gallery became not only a place to appreciate art, but also a space to feel welcomed and encouraged. Before seeking elected office, Hal was a regular presence at the Dan Ellen Borough Council meetings. We all remember him. Uh, always striving to stay informed and engaged. His deep concern for the well-being of the town he loved inspired him to run for council. Uh, and in two thousand twenty-one, he was unanimously appointed, serving with dedication for four years. During his tenure, he served on the Finance Committee, acted as a liaison to the Office of Emergency Management and CERTS. Worked to strengthen public safety as part of the Police Committee. And collaborated with the Recreation Commission to expand programs for residents of all ages. Hal gave his heart and soul to Dan Ellen. He listened with compassion, advocated with conviction, and cared. Carried an unwavering belief in what our Miracle Mile could be. His service to his country, to his town, and to his neighbors, because he was in the Navy, was marked by humility, integrity, and a genuine love for people. Though he is no longer with us, Hal's impact endures. His work, his spirit, his devotion to Dan Ellen will be remembered for years to come. I'm saying that regardless of what happens tonight. Hal Vandermark is deeply deserving of the Dan Ellen Lifetime Achievement Award. That's my nomination, if council will consider it. And I know two other council members as well nominated, so if they want to speak on reasoning behind it, the floor is theirs.
The now, I mean, everything we did was for Dan Ellen, Mr.'s family. Um, the things that he did with that art gallery and encouraging students, young and old, to, um. Get involved in art and, and things that he, he did were just, I mean, so much time that he gave. Much more than I think he ever got back in. Other than in adoration and love. I know the younger children loved to go and, and take his art classes and everything. And his being involved in council and all the things he did in town, the American Legion, he was a, a vice commander there. I mean, I had no doubt in my mind that Hal deserved it.
Councilwoman Rios, I know you're another council member that listed. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, um, I completely agree with what you both said. And, um, just to add that, how could you not nominate for Olaf on Halloween?
He danced down the street on twenty eighth.
Absolutely.
I won't go with him.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, any other nominations? There is another name.
Uh, yes, I actually, um, uh, entered two nominations also for Hal. It's.
It didn't come out right.
Hal, uh, I mean, we were talking earlier about Volunteer of the Year and how important it is to inspire, uh, the younger generation. Um, I can say personally, he inspired me. Uh, I know I'm not really part of the younger generation anymore. Uh, but he inspired everyone wherever he was. Uh, so I have him down. Um, I also wanted to, uh, nominate Diana Starris. Uh, for her years of work with the borough. Uh, I know she is recently retired and, um, is moving. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that she got, uh, the recognition she deserves as well.
Okay. Any other council members for a recommendation? Okay. Are we? Good with Councilmember Hal Vandermark?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It, it stinks that we couldn't give this to him while he was alive, but I know he's, uh, looking down on us from up above. His hands on your shoulder over there. I know it. I know it with great pride of you. And, uh, this is an honor and so Howard. Hal Vandermark Lifetime Achievement and Dan Ellen Award.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. So, okay. Okeydoke. Um, item number. Twelve on the agenda is public comments. We'll open the floor to the members of the public. We please ask that you state your name and residency. Uh, we'll open the floor to those in chambers first, and then we'll go to those online. That's why we don't cross one another. So floor is open to members of the public in person. Please state your name and your residency, and we're here to listen to your concerns, address your questions. Okay, we'll open it now to those online. If you have any questions or want to make, uh, comments and state your concerns, we're here to listen. Just please state your name and your residency. We'll open it up generally one last time to everyone in the public. Okay. We'll close that portion of the meeting to the public. And, uh, item number three ninety-five, which is our resolution to adjourn. Um, before we do that, our next council meeting is December fifteenth at seven P M. You can join us in person here in these chambers or online via Zoom. Not Facebook, Zoom. So can I have a motion and second on three ninety-five?
Move it.
Signal.
Second, Scott.
All in favor?
Hi.